...and planning board of the Marine Resource Committee regarding Cohog Bay. I'm not sure how we want to start this. Do you want to start, David, or do you want me to start?
I don't care.
Comfortable with you starting.
Let's see where it goes. Well, I'll do it. I was looking over the survey we did. You know, it probably, I'm not sure what it means, but first I've called around to a couple of scientists and people in the state, you know, and landowners and all that. One of your recommendations is I'll make a close in the Cohog Bay for four months, you know, this time of year, the summer months. You know, with all the summer people here, there's a bunch of different reasons. You know, just leaving the flats alone for four months and also leaving the landowners alone for four months during the summer. You know, I always mentioned Harpswell by the Sea and, you know, along Cohog Bay.
Yeah, I mean, we base it off science.
Is that my...
Is the green light on?
Yep.
It's on now.
But it just brings us over to other landowners, right? We just go to a different side of town.
Yep. No, I mean, based off the science aspect of closing it, that's the main reason why we implemented that closure two years ago. You know, on top of that, there are benefits, preserving what access we have, preserve the relationship with the homeowners in there, all the while preserving the shell stock in the bay.
Does anybody else back there want to speak to this?
Me, definitely. It's kind of long. What we did is we let people vote, and it came out that the most of the diggers voted to keep the bay open. Well, I didn't think it was going to come out that way, but that's the way it did. So, I've asked a lot of diggers, like, how they feel and why they felt this way, and a lot of them say that they think that the bay should be opened up because it keeps everybody spread out, doesn't keep everybody in the same spots. We have a lot of coves right now that are seasonal, that are open in the summer and not in the wintertime. So, we're in a really hard position because we have majority of the diggers that want to keep the bay open, and then you have members of the plant committee that doesn't want it open. So, and they think that they're right. So, and then they say that the rest of the town gets really damaged.
Hold the mic close.
The rest of the town gets dug up really hard. Why the bay's closed? So, I'm not telling you guys that I'm in favor for opening it or closing it. I'm just telling you, giving you guys information. So, I put myself in, like, you guys' shoes and were the, like, what would, if I was a selectman, what would I do in this situation? And, because I think that if you guys voted to close the bay, it's a slap in the face to the 19 people that voted to keep it open. And then, if you guys say, okay, we're going to close it, I mean, if you're going to keep it open, I'm backwards here, then it's a slap in the face to David, who's done more than anybody in the town for us diggers. So, you're kind of stuck in the middle. Well, years ago, I had this thing where the basin used to freeze up in the wintertime. So, I had this idea that I wanted it open, it used to open October 1st, so I wanted it to open December 1st. I mean, January 1st, sorry. So, I went to the clam meeting, this is 20 years ago, and I said to the clam committee, okay, I want the basin open January 1st, and they all voted yes, no problem. So, I go to the selectmen's meeting, and two of the diggers show up, and they're pissed, right? And they're like, this is not right. We wanted October 1st, and you wanted January 1st. So, the selectmen decided to split it in the middle and came up with December 1st. That's where it's meant to be sent. So, my opinion is, and this is not going to make Dave happy or anybody else in the room happy, but I think that you should split the bay in half. And, like, if I was in you guys' shoes, I would vote to, like, close half the bay, which I'm considering. We call it that, Brickyard and Fan Oars, half the bay and keep the other half open. That's kind of like splitting the bay in half and making half the people happy and the other half happy. That's my opinion.
You mentioned the 19 people who, they don't want any closures. From a conservation point of view, it doesn't make any sense.
Well, there's a lot of different reasons. I mean, everything else has been open all this time.
Oh, hang on. Get up there before you start.
I don't know. It's frustrating because, I mean, how did you guys get in office? What if you guys had a vote and you, and they voted for you, and they said, no, we don't want you as selectmen, so we're going to decide, we don't really care about that vote? Like, isn't that what the committee is for, is to speak for the voice of the clam diggers?
The diggers...
I thought it was for, right?
We have two things to look at. We have to look at the harvesters. We also got to look at the conservation angle here, too.
Okay. Well, maybe the wintertime, like, the state person wanted us to close a cove a couple of years ago, and you guys voted, and then that never happened. Beale's Cove was, oh, yeah, we closed Beale's Cove in the winter, all in favor, and it never closed because there was a state person here that wanted us to close one cove for conservation reasons. And so, really, we shouldn't have to go to clamming meetings then because what we say doesn't matter. And that's fine, close it, but just don't make us go to clamming meetings anymore. It's my thought, isn't it? I mean, why have us vote? And actually, the vote, the choice to have no closure at all wasn't even on it at first for the first people that bought their license. That was kept off of it. And then it was added later because people realized it wasn't on there. But, I mean, I just wonder then, why vote? Why did we? And you take our best digging and take it away at the best time of the year. Like, it could be good, close it in the wintertime when it's freezing or something like that, or, I mean, there could be conservation measures, but not take our best clamming and close it in the best time of the year. I mean, that seems kind of foolish to me, but I don't know. Just one person.
Well, there's a couple of things that I, one is, I like to base this on science rather than opinion. And certainly, the diggers are going to vote to keep it open. It's just like deer hunters would certainly not want to close off any deer hunting areas. I understand this is how you guys make your living. I respect that. But at the same time, we've got to keep the resource going. We can't just dig them all out. And I have a question about PFAS. Has there been any, Dave, you would know, seems like Cohog Bay was right in the line of fire for PFAS.
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
It's Harpswell sound.
Harpswell sound, okay. Okay. I stand corrected. Okay.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Yeah, I was going to say, in regards to the closure, I personally don't think it should be based on, I'm not sure where all the opinions source from, just the lack of convenience, I suppose. But it should be more on the science, and we know that there's spawning in the spring and fall. And I just read on NOAA Fisheries that from August to November is intense spawning, and a little earlier and later than that, but that's like the prime time. I think our relationship with the landowners, specifically at Harpswell by the Sea, has been fragile, although a lot of us have tried to mend that and have in certain areas. But why not leave them alone for the summer? We've had a closure before. I personally have seen a benefit from this. I'm in favor of it. I don't think that leaves anybody out of work. I think there's still products found elsewhere. Yeah, I don't see, and I'm not opposed to not going to meetings. If you don't want to be informed, then I guess don't be informed. But it seems like the Marine Resource Committee should be trying to preserve the resource, and it shouldn't be about the opinions of everybody else wanting. It's not going to be the best digging if we don't preserve it. That's my opinion.
All right. My issue with that is, I know that Cohog Bay is going to be better if you close it. That's not my issue. The issue is, is the rest of the town gets worse. Do you see what I'm trying to say?
Yep.
If I could, if I was my only person, and I could say to do the ultimate thing, is I would love to see Cohog Bay closed two and a half months in the spring and two and a half months in the fall. That would be perfect for me. My problem with closing it for four months in a row is I think it, the rest of the town gets whammed out, hammered so bad that it almost into extinction. Why we're waiting for Cohog Bay, then we all go to Cohog Bay? So, that's the science, too. You see what I'm trying to say? So, the first year we had it, two years ago, when Cohog Bay was open, I think it was like we were supposed to close it for four months, and then we decided that we waited too long, so we had a special meeting and opened it a month early. And then last year, was closing it for four months, but we had a bay, we had a cove that opened up, thank God, that saved us for a month because I think it's like this long wait, which is hard. And I'm not telling you that it shouldn't be closed or open. I'm just thinking that it's closed too long. So, that's why I was trying to say, like, to split it in the middle somewhere. It's a tough one because it's a tough one.
Yeah. All I got to say is, like, Cohog Bay makes up about 18% of our acreage with grow area in this town. It's a four-month closure, and it's at the key time of the year when it should be closed to incorporate, you know, a healthy spawn set in return, hoping that there's settlement throughout the mud that we had, you know, expired throughout the winter months. To me, it's a no-brainer. But, yeah, I mean, you guys...
So, the question is, I mean, we open and close and open and close. How much of the 82% that's left after the 18% is open or is viable?
Well, fortunately, we've seen an influx in soft shell throughout the town. I can attest to a piece over a dozen coves where we've seen a healthy settlement of soft shell last year, and they're still there this year, and they've gotten bigger. And I expect we'll be harvesting them before the fall's out. So, that's something else to look forward to. The first year that we had that closure, we did ask to open it a month early because we were exhausting other grow areas. But two years ago, we were limited on just how productive our grow areas were. It's gonna, that's turning the leaf right now as we speak.
Yeah.
I got a couple of questions. One would be, just to try to walk that line and be fair to everybody. What would the committee's opinion be on closing it for one tide, whether it be the night tide or the day tide, you know, so there was half the effort there that there may be otherwise? And my other question would be, if we don't close it, what happens in five or six years when it's dug out and there's nothing left there? Where are you guys going to go then? Like, what are you going to come back to the select board and ask for at that point if the resource is completely decimated?
It never gets decimated.
The state takes laws, makes the size and everything.
It doesn't.
Why doesn't everything else get dug out of town?
It doesn't get dug out.
But, I mean, I just heard that, from Robert, that when we close Cohog Bay, the other areas are getting dug out, so...
Well, because it may only be 18% of our area, but it's probably about, you know, 70% of where people dig the most.
Yeah. We've got nowhere else to go.
Acreage doesn't really mean a lot on that.
It was 70% of where our shell stock was, namely hard shell. We've seen an influx in hard shell throughout the town. We've spent, I mean, yeah, granted, last year, we didn't get involved with putting out seed, but we've done it five years in a row, correct, Paul?
Four times.
Yeah, but the committee did, and we have got a lot of help from the harvesters, and that is to try to take care of the rest of the town. And, yeah, I don't know.
What you're trying to say, most of the diggers that you talk to don't want to be micromanaged. So, they want to dig 365 days a year, day and night, seven days a week.
Wherever they feel like digging.
Yeah. Brunswick closes on Sunday. They don't dig at nighttime. They tell the diggers that they can't dig here now and then, and Harpswell's never been like that. We hope it doesn't get that way.
All right.
So, that's kind of...
That's understood. That was the answer I was looking for.
And then the older diggers say that they like everybody spread out. This puts you guys in a unique position because you guys, we let people vote, and their vote came out to, not to touch it, it kind of sucks, but we wish it wasn't that way. I don't know what you guys are going to do.
I have one other question. Why are there five diggers that don't have an opinion? That's, I mean...
Because, well, my dad, for example, he's, my dad's been digging the clams in his whole life in Harpswell, and now he digs, like, one time a week.
Okay.
So, whether you guys close Cohog Bay or not, it doesn't affect him. He said he's in the case.
So, the guys that are saying no opinion are the guys that are...
Well, I'm just, I'm just using my dad for example.
Yeah, okay.
Because he's dug for 50 years, and now he digs, like, once a month or twice a month. He doesn't think he should have an opinion on.
That makes, okay.
You got that?
Yep.
I don't, it, this is a tough decision for you guys because you've got the clam committee that wants to vote one way, and then you've got the diggers, majority of the diggers want to vote somewhere else. So, I don't know where you guys can divide it in the middle.
We sort of would like to please everybody. We'd like to. It's not going to be possible.
Nope.
And it's hard to figure out the science.
Yeah. It's all about conservation, though. The town spends $400,000 a year, you know, for conservation, you know, for the harvest there in town. You know, it's not like we're not paying attention to what's going on. But we spend, we spend more money on that than we certainly do on any other fishing in town. But our main goal for the three of us is to look out for the resource, and, don't get me wrong, and the harvesters, but you've got to look at the resource. And, you know, the people that I've talked to, not members of the committee, but I've called around the state, you know, they said, of course it's good to close it, you know, best you do in the spawning time. But, you know, if we go along with a four-month thing, and, you know, October and November comes around, like we did last time, you know, we opened it a month early several years ago. I think we saw results, if I remember correctly.
And does the committee come back and if there's some reason that...
Yeah.
It's detrimental that we would need it early and...
I know you guys aren't used to this kind of thing where you have to have a microphone, but the rest of the world would like to hear what you're saying, and we hear you better if you're using a microphone. So, either go to the podium or...
And, and, Brittany.
I didn't actually hear you, Brittany.
We'll consider that a talking stick, okay?
Start over.
I just think...
Hold the mic close.
In regards to the one tide, like, one tide or not, like, I personally have, like, many reasons as a single mom with three kids that it has been a huge benefit to be able to work one tide or the other. But I think anybody, any harvester in a situation is already, like, conflicted with the weather. Sometimes, like, if it's in the winter, like, the temperature, even in the summer, sometimes the temperature is dangerously too hot. So, having, you know, both...
Yeah. Oh, it makes perfect sense now. I just was looking for an explanation.
For sure. I'm sorry, what was the other, prior to this, what we're...
Hang on.
What? Don't look at me.
What did I say? No, I was going back to the conservation measures that, you know, we're doing, you know, with the...
Yeah. Like, can't we just come forward if it's so detrimental that no harvesters are able to make ends meet because of this closure and request that it be open sooner than the, than what we've agreed upon now? Like, we can come back and say, oh, this is absolutely not working for anybody. But I doubt that would be the case.
I think, I think some of the committee members, they did some test digs during that closure time, too, just to see what was happening.
Transsects?
And, and bring your cove and a couple of other places.
The biggest issue here is that you had 19 people, you, we let the diggers vote, the clam committee let diggers vote, and the majority of the diggers voted to keep Cohog Bay open. And then you guys are going to say, okay, we're going to close it anyway. And then it's kind of like, we're telling the diggers that we don't care what they think. The committee's going to do what they want. They can go screw themselves. It's not right. It's not right for you guys to close Cohog Bay and not listen to the 19 diggers behind you.
Yeah.
Whether, what my opinion is or not, it's not right. I don't care. We had a vote. It's like you guys getting voted for selectmen, and then someone's saying, oh, we're just going to keep the selectmen the way they were. I, I mean, I'm just telling you my opinion. So, these people are never going to want to go to our meetings ever again because they're going to think that the dig, that the clam committee does whatever they want.
The, I'm going to speak from personal experience on this because I didn't like the way things were going in the fishing industry many, many years ago. I started joining committees. I started going to public hearings. I got involved. I made my voice heard. Now I'm the selectman. These guys can do the same thing. They can, there's an opening right now, I believe, on the Marine Resource Committee because somebody just stepped down. So, they can join a committee as well. And, in my opinion, the committee, you guys are supposed to be the experts on this, and you're supposed to give us the information. And if the committee wants it closed, I think the committee carries a little bit more weight because they're the ones that are involved. They're the ones that are paying attention. They're the ones that were willing to step up and make their voice heard. So, I give the committee a little bit more clout.
But the committee is the one...
You got to go to the, my...
Talking stick. Talking stick.
Okay. It was the committee who wanted the vote and who decided to have that, to let the diggers decide. You're right. That is the committee that made that decision. So, they did speak, and that is what they wanted. But then, when they got the results, they didn't like it.
Well, you do have, you get the 13 that want the four months, then you got 11 that wanted, you know, three days a week. So, you're up to 24 that want some type of conservation. The 19, I said it before, 19 people, they don't want any conservation. They don't want any closures at all. They just want to dig the living hell out of it and call it good.
Hello. We got closed down for ice this winter. We couldn't dig for almost two months, really. And the only way of digging was cutting through the ice, breaking it, to make money. So, I think we did have some type of closure. So, what people are saying is, both.
And you got big guys, little guys.
I met, I met two people that...
Talking stick.
I'm just curious. How many of these 19 people, like, how many other meetings did they go to? Because it seems like they're at the one they have to go to to meet their expectations for their license. And then the reason we're here with the select board today is because we didn't want it to seem like it was just the Marine Resource Committee was looking out for the resource. We wanted to let everybody come and speak their piece. The fact is, nobody else is there the rest of the time. Everybody does what they minimum are required to do. And us here, we're volunteering our time to try to preserve our resource that we can continue to live, to utilize this as our income. We're looking for the, to the future for everybody, not just for ourselves. We're not the only ones that are benefiting from it. Like, why else would we be proposing it if it wasn't a benefit? How are we, single-handedly, going to benefit from closing it, I guess? It just, it doesn't make sense to me that everyone comes in, and they're heated, and they don't want to contribute any of their time the rest of the time. They do their bare minimum conservations, and then they show up to their bare minimum meetings and, well, they're there, but have no input to try to help preserve it.
I told you why. Our voice don't matter. That's why we...
Hang on.
You don't go there.
That's because when we did show up to the meetings and things, when we said stuff, it never got pushed ahead. We always got pushed behind. Nobody wanted to listen to us. And I was on the clam committee twice, and I wouldn't stay on it because every time I tried something, like, no night digging or something, well, you know, oh, but yeah, we can close it for four months if that's all we do is dig in Cohog Bay, and we can't dig there no more. We got to go dig over here. So, we're told where we're going to dig. That's another thing, especially when it's good digging.
I got some good points here. Key access in the summer months. Great Island Boll Yard, Bethel Point's not going to house all of us. We get our best price in the winter. Not the summer months. We should close it for the simple reason that there's spawning during them months. It does us a lot of good. We can't hold all the diggers at these landings in the summer months. We have so much more area in this town that, that you guys can dig, and you simply choose to go to Cohog Bay time and time again out of ease of access. We spend a lot of time on the mud in this town, probably more than most. And, I don't know, there's Cohogs all over this town. Not as many clams, but Cohogs are everywhere. Yeah, I don't know. Shut it down.
Well, there was, counting the no opinions, there's 29 people who didn't want to keep it open, didn't vote to keep it open. So, the 19 is a plurality. And if you'd look, just looking at that, then the 19 wins, but other, that's 29 people otherwise.
A bunch of, a bunch of diggers, and trying to get all their opinion. I've found two diggers that voted three days. And I asked both of them if they had a vote, only to vote, whether it's coves or open Cohog Bay, they both said that they would vote to keep it open. So, when you say that majority of the people want a conservation closure, that's not true. That's an untrue statement, from what I heard. I'm just giving you guys information. I know you guys are going to do whatever you guys want to do, but...
Well, we do, we do what we have to do.
We want to do what's, what's best for the town.
Keep us spread out.
You guys are a tough one.
Just, just to clarify, committee never voted that we were going to use this, this survey to dictate this closure. This was my idea, which for the past two decades, just trying to make this town better, but people seemed, through their eyes, as I'm doing what Dave's doing, what he wants to do. And I was sitting there and that. And the meeting that I came up with this idea is because the audience was full of people getting their last, you know, credited meeting in, didn't want to be there to begin with. And I was hearing it come from a couple individuals in the audience, just like, you know what, let's see what opposition I'm up against. Why would, why do I want to waste countless hours of my time on top of the conservation measures that I've, that I've done to try to make this town better? Let's see just who I'm up against so I can turn my back on this. But still, there's no denying, closing that such small portion of this town for four months out of the year, the gains that we're going to get from it, like, it far exceeds anybody's opinion, anybody's pocket. It's all based on the resources, period.
And I, and I think it would have been better, I think it would have been better if we told the diggers that their vote was just a suggestion. A suggestion to the guys at selectmen. It wasn't, it wasn't final. I don't think we, we should have kind of voiced that. Kind of wasn't right on our part. I thought that's what you were going to say.
Regardless whether we close Bay or not, but I think we need to sit down and we need to go over our ordinance. And people that just want zero involvement, charge them whatever you want to charge them. Because it wastes a lot of our hours at our meetings to bickering, constantly back and forth with someone that doesn't want to invest the effort, whether it's financially or physically, to improve our resources. So, I think, you know, moving forward, close the bay if you want, keep it open. But I think we really need to sit down and restructure our ordinance to appease the people that don't care about our program. So, that's what I think we should do.
Well, I said in the beginning that I will choose science over opinion almost every time. And I know you guys are on the flats all the time. You know what's going on out there. But, boy, when you set out transsects and you dig and you find out there's nothing there, you know, it, and this spat is settling, and you're going to have something in the future. And our, our job is to try to protect your future. But you have something to dig tomorrow, next year, and the year after.
2007, 2000, game 264.
Well, then, you guys are going to put us all in a spot where all the spat is settling in, and that's where we're going to be is because it's all soft shell clams and a lot of the other places where we're going to be not in Cohog Bay. And as far as science goes, the Cohogs, like, if you look at the scientists that was here, you know, a year or so ago, the Cohogs probably aren't going to be here forever regardless of whatever conservation measures you do because our climate really isn't made for it, isn't ideal for it. So, that's what they were saying 50 years ago or whatever happened, that just right when soft shell clams sat back in, that the Cohogs went out, but it was because of a cold winter or whatever. I hope that doesn't happen, but...
I could just say one thing, that one of the things that David did bring out in his report, I think, was not only is it not having the plants available, but the mud itself was becoming very unproductive and not very, uh, cheap on the swishing, because the cost returning. of the cost returning, and even as they're spawning, they don't have a chance to settle in. And then when comes the winter, it's frost eating them out. But not being a digger, we're talking about...
I wish the Cohog Bay could be closed. I know this probably isn't possible to enforce, but I always wish the Cohog Bay could be closed. During, like on minus tides, it was open, and on minus tides, it wasn't open.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that would be tough.
I know, it's kind of hard to enforce something like that, because on good tides, like four days a month is part of the Bay, you know, you can dig a month, four days a month. So, that's it, we gave you as much information as we can, so...
So I'm just concerned that the other eighty-two percent, I mean, Dave says that Cohog Bay's eighteen...
I would say about fifty percent of, if you go about Cohogs, my opinion is fifty percent of our Cohogs are in Cohog Bay, the other fifty percent is the rest of the town, even though it's only eighteen percent of the town.
Yup.
About Cohogs, is that about right?
Well, I'm just talking about product in general, and, and the, the rest of the town, eighty-two percent, I'm concerned that there's enough digging there, if we were to close Cohog Bay, that you can, you do have enough resources, um, and the other eighty-two percent to get, keep your book, keep you going.
But I kind of don't want to do this every year.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, every year is different, though, is kind of the problem with that, you know, we have a couple bad winters, a lot of ice and stuff, and stuff can change real quick, so I mean, it is unfortunate, but it sucks having to do this every year, but I think there is some benefits to having this discussion on a yearly basis, because every year, as you guys know, is different. You know, it's not all the same.
Anybody else want to talk to this? Don't hold back.
No sense in speaking.
Oh, yeah, there is, yeah, there is.
All I can say is that you better go step out there and check other places to dig, it's all a cycle.
It ain't even worth it.
It's not worth it, I can bring it to you.
Do what you want, it don't matter, it's all a cycle. Mother Nature will take care of it, no matter what you guys do.
Right, yeah.
Happens every year, every fifty years, every forty years. People come in and start doing clamming and Cohogging, if they know it all, if they don't. Ask the old timers, they'll tell you...
I would like to suggest one thing, if we're gonna close this in the wintertime, if we freeze up, no one goes out there and breaks the ice to go get a Cohog. How's that? Pretty good idea, ain't it?
Yeah, actually.
Get a federal check, that's all.
Yeah.
We'll stay home, get a federal check, right?
Uh, probably not, the way things are going.
Yeah, that's what I figured, so screw us.
I think you'd need, you'd need an oil slick for that.
I know.
I mean, even the, the economics behind this closure, I mean, reading some of the information they've given us here, it looks like the town of Brunswick closes their Cohog market the, the day you guys open it, so how, and I don't know the answer, I'm asking a question here, how is it economically, when you guys are digging against Brunswick in the summertime, you know, and you have, say, twice as many, or whatever it happens to be, more Cohogs on the market?
Price goes down.
Price goes down. They hate it. On, on, on average, eighteen to twelve more cents a piece for our...
When we open.
When we open, like, not even a week, week and a half after Brunswick closes, and it's, it's, it's really upsetting with the Brunswick harvest.
Oh, they hate it.
Oh, yeah, and, and...
Well, we're here in Harpswell, not Brunswick, so I'm here to look out for the Harpswell harvesters, not Brunswick.
No, exactly. Yeah, but what I'm, what I'm, you know, economically, like, do we cash in?
So it, there's an economic benefit to the closure?
My best month out of the year, and I'm sure a lot of other harvesters can agree, is December.
Absolutely.
I mean, how can you not? I mean, those coves will sustain throughout the winter months, up to seventy harvesters in one cove, in just one cove, tide after tide after tide. If you want to talk economics, oh my God, like, that's even more of a no-brainer, to, to, to open that up, you know, during those winter months. I mean, if you want to consider that little cash cow, yeah, definitely, you know, because the, the economic benefits behind it's more, more, really, like, you know, yeah.
Brunswick closes their clam flats in the wintertime, and they end up with these huge Cohogs. Thank God we don't, we'd be ended up with ice cores, for now, I hope that anything comes to that, we'll be arguing those and everything. But yeah, I don't know, yeah, they have these gigantic coves, it goes a month, two months.
So the suggestion...
That could happen, that isn't, that didn't happen to us in the last few years, at all.
You know, it's one, based on economics, the crowd, Robert, when's your best month?
Oh.
Sammy?
Yeah.
December, Justin? When's your best month?
Well, it couldn't possibly be in the middle of...
Before, before the Fourth of July.
David's talking to this, it's...
When they pay them all.
Yeah, anyways, anybody else here in the audience that digs year, year round, what's your best month of the year? Alright, I mean, if you want to base it off economics, then there you go, but we're not, we're basing this off the preservation of the resources, the enhancement of future stocks, so we can continue doing this.
Economics just seem to be a bonus.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
So the suggestion is to close from August first to December first, you'd still love winter digging, right? For the most part, well, as Mr. Carpenter says, you have to dig through the, bust through the ice, but...
I don't know why he said that, I mean, I spent a handful of days, me and Williams, breaking out ice, and there was a bunch of other people that were able to harvest after breaking that, break, you know, breaking that ice out, so I don't know why that would be an issue, but, uh, yeah.
It's four months, gives a chance for...
I mean, I, I, you guys could take a ride down there, and yeah, you, you might hear someone say, get rid of night digging, that would be even more foolish, that bay is so sensitive to negative tides, you really can't access the majority of those flats unless it's like a ten-foot or lower, and we see eighty percent of those tides in the night hours, either whether it's early morning, but mostly late evening tides, and people that treat this like a serious income, we'd have to invest in airboats, I'd have to buy an airboat if I had to get off the flats, you know, an hour after dark, and then that's just gonna create more tension with, with, with the residents, you know? And I forget who mentioned, like, you know, access, that, that, we have, we have Cohog, we have, uh, Bethel Point, and we have Great Island Boatyard, and I'm, the last thing I want to do is upset them and, and just crowd their, what little bit, what small land and they have there, you know, with a number of boats throughout the summer.
There's a lot to take into account here, really, that's a lot to take into account.
And I, I'd like, I'm just curious, how many people are actually digging Cohog Bay right now? Because I haven't been in there in two months. Yeah, Robert? Yeah.
So we're, we're talking about a four-month closure, give things a chance to settle and grow a little...
Yeah, exactly, give that, give the substrate, give the, give the substrate a chance to stiffen back up, to right itself, let the Cohogs be undisturbed while they're spawning, so we have the most successful spawning session we can. You know, and if things get tight and people think we need to, then we can revisit this and open it a month early like we did the first year, because we was exhausting all the resources throughout the rest of this town, we were going high and low, but if you, it, we do have a serious, probably, it's been a long time since we've seen the seed settlement of soft shell that we did last year, and they're all still right there, they're all, I guarantee we're gonna be harvesting those before the summer's out.
Must've been due, too.
While, while I got you guys ready here, what's the green crab situation look like out there?
I haven't seen, no, I haven't seen many green crabs at all.
Mother Nature takes care of it.
Not a, not a fraction of what we have in the past.
We'd have a good cold winter, that would...
How about ribbon worms?
Yeah, ribbon worms are still out there, I mean, not in droves, but I think these big soft shell settlements that we have, you're gonna see them laying to those in places, for sure.
Green crabs, we, green crabs got really bad like five, six years ago, and then we had this really cold winter, and they, I walked out over the ice and I had, you could see them in the ice, like millions of them dead, killed them, when, when we had ice, it killed them.
Yup, yup, good sight.
You know, I, I, other than doing this for a successful spawning, there's so many other factors at play, the accessibility, it's sheltered, when, when, when you have to harvest, and I know everybody here in the room has to throughout the winter months, it's, it's a sheltered bay, you, I don't care how, how hard the wind's blowing, you can still go in that bay, most days you can still go in there with a boat. Um, it's just, the bay is very unique, um, and we gotta try as hard as we can to keep it that way.
I know we're getting off topic, Dave mentioned night, night digging.
Use the mic.
In the summertime, it's hot out, and I like digging at nighttime because it's cool.
Yeah, yeah.
And I love my job, and I hope you don't take it away from me ever, that's my opinion about night digging.
Alright.
Alright, anybody else? Last chance. Next to last chance. Anybody?
No, I, I just want to remind you that we should schedule another workshop and, um, go over our ordinance. These people that want to have nothing to do with the program.
Sometime in the fall.
If it's a matter of just, you know, giving them the option, don't come to any of our meetings, don't come to any of our conservation days, just pay this fee and let them do it, because it does, it wastes a lot of our time.
Well, we, we, we had a modified version of that.
Yeah. Alright, thank you.
Alright.
Okay.
Well, if I, if nobody else wants to be heard at this point, we'll, uh, we'll close the workshop.